Thank you all. All right, is there anyone that would like anything pulled from the consent agenda? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda items two, one through two, five. Second, all in favor? Aye, that agenda is approved. Is there any public input? Audrey, Mr. Kennedy, Tom? You're good. Want to include everybody that's in the audience. All right, we will go right over to Principal McKinnon, who I am seeing every single day of the week now. We have worked that out for the spotlight at Wolverhampton.
Thank you, Chair President Audi and this is the school committee. A couple of things, a little focus this week, this month on design. Our design class, which members in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are proud of. First picture on the left, some of our eighth graders. They were at the time building an app for computers and phones that could help mankind. They had some great, great different apps that they came up with. Seventh grade on the right-hand side spent some time coding. Grade six on the next slide is they are working on building a robot that jumps, that actually leaps. And the picture on the right-hand side, actually, that is a picture of our same sixth grade in the classroom. They are working on ancient civilizations at the time. Next slide, Tom. This is our grade five, now working on research projects in here in our newly designed library. Just a, just a great layout. I think we all feel the same way, you know, sitting here. We don't have those big clunky tables in front of us anymore, which is really nice. And on the far right-hand side or the right-hand side, we have our third graders making evergreen arrangements with the members of the Saconnet Garden Club. Today, we had this kind of garden club here again with our sixth graders, building wreaths to be hung around the commons. Next slide, Tom. Pictures of our grade one doing magnificent things in their classrooms as they're getting ready for Thanksgiving. And then kindergarten, working in the, with Mr. De Lael, working on some Thanksgiving pictures in their art class. Let's see, next slide. Okay, these, these were our students of the month, month of November. The theme was risk takers, students who are not afraid to take risks in the classroom. And then the picture on the right, working on attendance. And a lot of times, if you remember back in the day, we recognize our students who didn't miss a day all year and will do that. But we're gonna do something where we recognize our students don't miss a day all trimester. And we had forty-two students who had perfect attendance and they were treated to a Shotwell's hot chocolate chip cookie. And they truly enjoyed it. This was on Tuesday of this past week. And upcoming events, I believe that's a next slide. Yeah, here we go. We have the winter holiday shop that our Saconnet PTO is running beginning next week. I think they set up on the fifteenth, but they go through sixteen through the nineteenth. Boys have a basketball game on Monday. The winter showcase concert for our band and choruses on Wednesday at six thirty, twelve seventeen. The first girls' game and boys' game, it'd be the second boys' game, but the game was originally supposed to be in New Bedford at Alma Del Mar. It has now been moved to home. So we will have a girls' game and boys' game at home on Thursday, the eighteenth of next week. Winter break, as we know, twenty-second, the first time in a long time. It's a two-week time period away from school. When we get back, and I think I touched on this the last time, our first tech students and, and team will be hosting a qualifying tournament here on Saturday, January seventeenth. That's Martin Luther King Weekend. On that Saturday, we'll have, we'll be having seventeen schools coming into the building throughout the state, competing in this tournament. So that, it'll be a great opportunity for, for schools to drive quite a ways down here to Little Compton. And, you know, get a, get a peek at our school. But the tournaments will be taking place in the gym. There'll be some practice areas in the commons area. And I want to, you know, thank Ms. Ms. Brazil and Mr. Gay, members of our first tech team, for putting this all together. I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for, for us to showcase the school at that time. And that's everything that's going on.
Thank you, Principal. And I just will piggyback on Principal McKinnon. I saw Mr. Gay yesterday while I was attending parent-teacher conferences. Because of that event is so large, he is searching if there are people that want to volunteer. I'll see what, how my coaching schedule looks, but nonetheless, it's gonna be, as you said, seventeen other schools are coming to, to home game for a little conference.
Home game, home opportunity for us.
To say. Superintendent report, I know Lori is ill today. Are we just skipping the report or Carolyn, do you want to follow up?
So the last I heard Lori was going to include an update on the water system in her nest M F, the school committee, most likely next year.
Right along, Mr. McNamee with our finance report, item six, one through six, three.
Hey, thank you. So we have, start with FY twenty-four, because we've got three years going, soon they have four years going as we move into the twenty-seventh budget. But we actually have a preliminary draft of the audit for FY twenty-four. And that was sent to me mid-week this week. So there's a little bit of a bunch of changes we gotta make to that. But we're hoping that we'll get those changed, made, and we'll get that final report by the end of December. In the meantime, we'll be doing the twenty-five audit in January. I have all the information to the auditors, so they complete that in January within anticipated issue date of that one by the end of March. And then that will get us back up to where we should be in terms of the audits. As far as twenty-seven, there was really weren't many, any changes in twenty-five between the twenty-four, twenty-five and the before. So in twenty-six, things are moving along. We probably have a little bit of additional cost for student services in terms of some of the needs for the students. So that, that may impact our budget for FY twenty-six negatively. I haven't received any additional billings from National Grid on the electricity so far. But I anticipate that there will be some being issued very shortly. The virtual net metering is coming out on a regular basis. So those numbers are being appropriately booked into the financial statements for the virtual net metering. And we're moving forward with the sale of the energy for the solar. I think you'll have a contract tonight that we'll look at, which is for Newport Renewables to kind of oversee those, package up those for sale and also maintenance on the, on the system as well, too. Other than that, no changes on the capital side. As I indicated the last meeting, I will be repairing the tax return that allows to get the investment credit back, which is a hundred and sixty-eight, one seventy-five. So I anticipate filing that before mid-January.
Sixty-eight, one seventy-five.
Yep, yep. The, the amount that we originally anticipated out of that.
Any questions for Mr. McNamee? Thank you, John. We'll go over to the many reports. We have the policy subcommittee meeting last Wednesday, in which some homeschool families did attend. Let me make sure we have this here. We are working on verbiage for some of the homeschool, let's say require, I mean, what do I want to use this term? Information, collect data collection from parents and families?
Data collection for verification.
Correct.
Part of their application process.
So there's no read tonight, but we are, we were certainly sensitive to those that were in the room. And we had a great back and forth dialogue and we will follow up with you all on that when we have something in place. Tonight, we will be going over our second read of the contract signing policy and as well as the electronic device use policy and action items, eight, one and eight, two. And our next meeting, probably sometime in the new year, I don't anticipate, so we have something pressing for the end of the year. And I will, we will certainly make sure that everyone is aware of that, be a parent square. Burt Smith, School Committee liaison report, Mr. Voisher.
Thank you. A lot came out of last night's meeting. I did, didn't attend, I had a chance to listen to, but Burt Smith did have, and I've spoken to Lori Mitchell since early this afternoon about this. They, they did hold their first ever CTE fair for their middle school, schoolers. That was, I think, last week. And I believe, Principal McKinnon, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're planning on actually coming here to offer some information about the CTE program. And then also planning to invite us to meet with some freshmen who are in the CTE program so that our eighth graders can get a better idea as to what that program is all about and, and sort of help get them comfortable as they move into their freshman year there. And just as a side note, the Newport area career and technical center is going to be having a showcase this. I don't know, did you mention that in your report? I'm sorry if you did.
We were actually talking about it last night, Dr. Mitchell and I, at the end of, but no, nothing in, in our report. But we'll, we'll put that out.
This Friday, I think is what. So they'll be highlighting some of their programming up here at Wolverhampton as well. That's pretty much the report from Burt Smith, the Newport County area.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Item seven, three, Ms. Sue Chase with the Wellness Committee, the ASO.
Thank you. Well, I really don't have anything to report. We met in September and we'll meet again in January. I do know the soil to table group just had a successful fundraiser selling bulbs to support that program. And that the teacher initiatives of yoga and exercise have been carrying on very well.
Awesome, sir. Thank you so much. And Mr. Voisher, take us home with the Recreation Committee liaison.
The sort of big news coming out of the Rec Committee has to do with playground. We did remove all of the swings out there at the playground a week or two ago with the help of Principal McKinnon and Professor Osborne and the team here, just out of abundance of safety precaution. There looked to be some rust or something that didn't look quite right. So we removed the swings for now. And we've ordered, the Recreation Committee has ordered new swings that will be installed, hopefully within the next three to six weeks. It's just a question of getting the material in and then having our playground expert, John LaRue, work with Mr. Osborne and his team here to get those installed, hopefully sooner than later. Also, we submitted a report today from Mr. LaRue, again, who's a certified playground inspector.
Yeah, he's one of the few in the country.
Yep, he's, which is a very specific skill set. We're lucky to have him. And so he did do this safety check for, for us. I believe he charged us one dollar to do it, which was really generous on his part. And he submitted a pretty extensive report, which is about thirty-six pages, about eighteen pages of photographs. So I have to admit that I got it on my way home this morning, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. But whatever outcome is there, we'll work together with the school to make sure that the playground is safe and parts get replaced as they need to. And we have all of our roles figured out. So it, we're working together really nicely to just ensure that the playground is, is great for the community and for this.
Thank you, Mark. It's awesome. And we have John LaRue on the Rec Committee to provide that service because I can only imagine why.
Very lucky.
Not having him would be like, all right, on to our action items. Eight, one, this is our second read, so we'll consider, discuss and vote to approve the contract signing policy. Prior or following last meeting, the last regular school committee meeting in November, we asked if any members had questions, concerns or follow-ups, to please reach out to Sean, was that correct? Or, yes, Sean or Carolyn. Didn't receive anything. We spoke about it again at our policy subcommittee meeting last week. I do not believe we made any changes beyond what we already talked about in front of the school.
Right, I don't, I don't think there were any changes from when the document was presented to the school committee last month. What was discussed last month, to the best of my recollection, is one, have a differentiating between the superintendent and a new superintendent for a period of time. School, the Policy Subcommittee did not adopt that change. Likewise, I do think there was some conversation around the five thousand dollars versus ten thousand dollars. And the Subcommittee did not adopt any change. So what you had at the last meeting is what you have before you now. School committee is obviously free to discuss and make any changes that a majority of the committee deems fit.
Correct. Does anyone have any further concerns as outlined by Sean just now?
Yeah, I mean, I was, I'm the one that brought up the five thousand dollars last month. How is everything running now that we don't have this policy in effect right now? I mean, what's the, I know you proposed this originally, but why do we?
You have contracts before you tonight for approval. Some of those would continue to linger in front of you, like the bus contract, for instance. I think that would meet the criteria that it would need to be forwarded to the school committee. The Newport Renewables contract, based on my review of that, it's approximately three thousand dollars. It would fall under that ten thousand dollar cap. So it will be brought, brought forward. I'm sorry, it would not be brought forward. It would be signed by the superintendent.
To your point, even at five thousand, that wouldn't be brought forward.
Right, and to be clear, the bidding requirements of the town and of the state still need to be followed, regardless of this policy's existence or not. This is literally just who has the authorization to sign the bottom line on the contract. So if the purchasing process is not being followed, that's a separate issue, which I have no reason to believe it is being followed. But this is about, do these contracts need to come back to, to the committee? And again, there's exceptions where there's emergencies, IP information, all of that. That would be treated separately, will be signed off by superintendent for appropriate destiny.
I guess my thought on that, Sean, I've been here five years and there's never been an emergency where we had to have a contract signed in between our, between our monthly needs. So firstly, I believe in my own personal feelings is that the state has already gave the superintendent too much leniency to, to do what they want. Where I think that, what is the problem with bringing the contracts back to the school committee so that it keeps us in the loop of what's going on? So it's not just in the background, things are happening and we have no knowledge of that.
We do have knowledge because Mr. McNamee gives us financial report.
I'm talking about contracts, about contracts being, about contracts being signed. What, what is the harm? And again, I can attest for five years, probably a little bit longer now, that there's never been an emergency situation where we had to have a contract signed between the thirty days. So.
There was one this summer. Where it came before us, I mean, it was over the ten thousand, but we've certainly had instances. This is just, like Sean said, it's giving empowering, whether it's the superintendent, the business manager and/or the special education director to move forward without having to call a special meeting. I mean, a great example would be an out-of-district, or excuse me, an in-district student needing an I E P that exceeds ten thousand dollars. I mean, we shouldn't, I don't think we should have, be the hold-up to stamp that. We have, we have to do that. More importantly, Sean stated that we still are under the guise of what the town's regulations are and the state regulations, so.
I think the other thing, I had my concern on that last month, was that, that the superintendent works for the school committee directly, not the finance director or the special education director. Yeah, no offense to you, this is not about you or anything. This is the idea, the, the whole process of the superintendent reports back to the school committee and that's our connection back to here. So to be able to sit there and let her be able to delegate or whoever the superintendent is, to be able to delegate to other individuals to be able to sign contracts, I am not for that at all.
All right, so, so a couple of things. Thank you, you've said your piece. You also didn't send in any amendments to Sean.
I did, we had a conversation.
We, we had a conversation. We asked for everything in writing for the amendments at the last school committee meeting.
I had a conversation with Sean after the last meet.
Was it put in writing? Like I said, we've verbally stated at the first read, if you have concerns, please put them in writing and the Policy Subcommittee will review them at the time of our meeting. We didn't have anything. We checked multiple times. I checked with multiple bodies and you're, you're bringing up the same thing. So that's fine. But if anyone else have any discussion, we can continue to discuss, but otherwise, you know, I'll call for a vote. And you're more than welcome to vote as you see fit.
Right, and, and.
Anyone, everybody.
Yeah, so in terms of what you are approving tonight, if you want to modify the existing policy to change anything to accommodate Mike's comments, you certainly can do that. One piece in terms of oversight, what the policy does allow for and mandates is unless there's privacy concerns that we're dealing with a student's educational record, barring something like that, the policy requires that all these contracts come before you, not in a formal, okay, we have to approve and move forward. But that's providing the oversight function where it's not just being signed and put into a black box somewhere. It should be coming forward. Now, in terms of the delegation piece, I think it's, you can change the delegation piece, you can just view it the superintendent. You can have a delegate to certain people, have the superintendent delegate to no one. That's again, a policy preference. And there are school committees that don't have this policy and it's not like those districts aren't floating. I do, from my perspective, I do see it as a, a burden for the school committees on what are relatively, I won't say harmless, but like contracts that you really don't have much discretion over anyhow. But if the committee decides, no, we want to see every single one and have a vote on every single one, then that's totally in your purview.
Correct. I did express some concern at the last meeting around the number and made the suggestion, suggestion. And, and thank you for your report that you spoke of it and decided to, to stay with policy the way that it is. I didn't submit anything in writing, I don't. At this time, I feel like maybe we're rushing it a little bit. And that we can survive without making a decision that perhaps either within Policy Subcommittee or in executive session, it deserves some further discussion.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess for one thing, you said it comes back to the school committee as far as part of the policy that you're proposing. It's coming back to the school committee when, after the contracts have already been signed? Or at what point does it come back to the school committee?
The contract has been finalized, signed.
Exactly. Every, every contract that's executed comes, can come back for us. Certainly, anything that we vote on, we know about. But anything that is going to be performed, as Sean said, it just doesn't go into a black box. If there's going to be a contract, like the Newport Renewables, would either come up in Lori's memo to the school committee or it would come up in a meeting in which it was shared via the superintendent or John McNamee, that we are now contracted with them. And, and that number amount would be shown in both his financial reports and in the follow-up.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say that I'd rather have it come back to us and let us have the discussion, the discussion. If there's any comments that we want to make, let us have those comments. Whether it's gonna be a contract that needs to be done because we have to fulfill our requirement or what have you, that's another story. But at least we could ask if we do have any questions on it before we just give over that things. Yeah, you can just sign these. I mean, that to me just, that doesn't fly. I just rather see, and you know something, a contract may come for us when we may not have any questions. But at least give us the opportunity to be able to ask the question before you just, you know, let go off and sign these things. That's to me, that's not right.
I think when you really look at these bullets, though, and, and the opportunities in which this authorization could be utilized, it, it, it's very niche. Like they're very specific things. And so we're not talking about just like, you know, these grand vast contracts. Like they're very targeted and specific. And when I read them, I think it's very reasonable that the superintendent would have the authority to be able to sign for these things.
It, it does state that authorization, if the contract meets one or more of the following criteria.
Right.
So more could be outside of this.
No, the following criteria.
Following criteria, it gives you, so it could be one of those things or multiple.
But to your point, and, and to your point, Michael, it is one or all. Only one needs to be met in order for this to be effective, just so that. Correct, I'm making sure that I understand it. But I will say that an emergency procurement that must be made prior to the next regular school committee meeting is fairly vague. And the determination of an emergency procurement that must be made, to me, is pretty wide open, is pretty wide berth. My definition of an emergency procurement that must be made before the next meeting could be different than yours. And so I'm really, we're really giving the opportunity to, to spend ten thousand dollars on something that is single, singly determined as being an emergency procurement. And I, I just, I'm just not sure that that is very specific language that kind of doesn't, I, I think that's a wide open. I could think it was an emergency to buy ten thousand dollars worth of pencils. I could think it was an emergency to buy ten thousand dollars worth of pretty much anything. And all I have to do is say, well, I thought it was an emergency, so I spent ten thousand dollars. And I thought it was an emergency that I needed to spend ten thousand for the next meeting.
So in the, so it, okay, you're not wrong. So in the event, let's say that there is a system failure within the school. Does this, us not approving this, does this prevent? Let's say, you know, Saconnet Plumbing comes in here and there's a fix, but it costs over ten thousand dollars. Do they need, does it need to come before this, this school for them to implement?
Well, so.
Or if it's, let's say it's under ten thousand.
Want to be, to be clear with, in terms of money being spent, you, you also have a budget process that is approved and there's like maintenance line items and things. And that money is there for those emergency reasons and that you see and you approve on an annual basis. And I don't think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have any policies where if line items are going to be changed on the budget that comes before the committee, or do we have that process like that?
Well, no, I don't even know, I shouldn't report on that.
Well, no, I shouldn't report on that each month, but when we're looking at the contracts. With any district, you probably have a half a dozen major contracts. Here we've got busing, food service. We got Portsmouth High School, all those contracts obviously become before the committee. You have your uh non certified contract, your labor contract, teacher contracts. When you start getting into uh, you know, whether we're going to use a particular O T P T service. Especially with uh special ed, some of it has to do with proximity to Little Compton. Uh it's it's much tougher to kind of bid out some of those those. Processes and and oftentimes, there's not so much of contract. Uh that's that's involved with with some of that. They're providing services as needed for for particular students. Uh and also, I I look at Little Compton and smaller contracts, I mean, you might have something for. Copy machines and printers that we have here, uh but. Beyond that, I mean, you may have a contract for that postage machine out there, which is like. Sixty dollars a quarter or something like that. That's theoretically is a contract, but. But you don't really have a whole ton, so I'm not really concerned about.
So to Michael and your point, Mark, what would you like to see?
Yeah, I think for me, ten thousand just seems like, you know, looking at. The overall budget, looking at how we really want to show as, we really want to be as responsible as possible and have. As many of these, I I think ten thousand just seems like a lot. I I I. I I think that we had talked about, I think we had talked about five and I think that's pretty generous. I think five is. Putting a lot of trust into one single person to make a decision and I think that it doesn't happen that often and. I I probably would be more around a thousand dollars or I I honestly, I don't know that we need this at all.
What if, Sean, what if we removed the the dollar amount altogether? And just put contract signature authority regarding allocation of grant funds, employee contracts, except for collective bargaining agreements. And really take the the money out of it.
Anything that didn't, anything that didn't fall to one of those other categories regardless of value. Dollar value would then come before the committee. So if it was an I E P placement for ninety thousand dollars a year. That would not come before the committee.
Yeah, and.
That I could, that uh just.
A contract for plumbing services for a thousand dollars.
I think that's okay.
Fifty dollars, whatever the whatever the dollar.
Now contracted, so my example was like an emergency one time fix. As John McNamee said, there's not many contracts that come before the.
You got a water heater that uh we have to replace. We're gonna replace it.
Correct, but would that even need a school vote? Because it's not a contract, it's.
To replace the water heater.
Say again?
Probably seventy five hundred dollars to replace the water heater.
Correct, but I mean, without it, I mean, that's not a contract.
It's an expenditure, so now you're talking about procurement and contracts. I think they think we're. We're mixing up the two.
Correct.
Talking about contracts.
So procurement would not come before this, you know.
No, but those.
Dr. Mitchell and Principal McKinnon, whoever is the power to be that it's like, hey, we don't have running water. We need to have this fixed. It costs X, like you don't have to come before us to do that.
You have, you have a budget that's been approved.
Correct.
I don't think that's the issue though, Sean. At the end of the day, we're not looking to stop the operation of the building. The building needs to go on. The building needs to to operate. I think they don't understand that. I think the idea is just to be able to give anybody. Uh or or multiple people the idea to go off and sign stuff without it coming from front of us. At the end of the day, who's responsible for the budget? You know, we get, we delegated to the to the superintendent, right? But who approves that? Who who actually goes reviews that with us? John puts a budget together with superintendent. We got to come back and give us our stamp to that, right? At the end of the day, right? So who's responsible for that? At the end of the day, the five of us that are sitting here.
And and to your point, I I can maybe do a better example than buying ten thousand dollars worth of pencils. Last. Committee, school committee, we heard about a security operation uh with using artificial intelligence. If that were a contract that we signed into. For a year long service and it was nine thousand five hundred dollars and it came back to us and we heard about it. And we thought that it wasn't a very great thing to buy. I think we'd all feel kind of silly for having. Given ten thousand dollars away to sign onto a contract for something that we don't think is worth it.
So if I can propose to uh your input. If we were to remove the dollar amount.
Look, that's not worth it.
We have a question from the.
My set just. Listening to the conversation, concern is, at least as I understand it, is there's a short track of urgency. Disbursement at some level, you know, whether it's five or ten thousand. But it's really the the urgency and necessity, the 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 emergency nature of disbursement. So one way to mitigate that may be to define the emergency in terms of health, safety. Uh you know, life, safety, you know, some, you know, hurts, you've got to have water, heat. Things like that, but there is no fundamental. Dispute about. So define the emergency power to having to do with health, safety. And I think that resolves what I understand the conflict.
Yeah, I mean, to Mr. Kennedy's point, that's more of a procurement issue, what he's saying.
The state procurement law does address the emergency. That emergency is going to be determined by, obviously by the superintendent.
Sean, what if we were to remove the dollar amount and keep everything as as is in this policy?
Uh you should, I mean, to be clear, like the the, you could not move forward with the policy at all and you'd be. Fine, like there's no, so like you can do anything you want with the policy.
Okay.
Yeah, this. You know, if you remove the dollar amount, then it's got to meet one of the other criteria. If it doesn't meet one of the other criteria, then.
Yes.
It's coming before the committee before it's approved. Uh if it won't fix the definitional problem. That you've identified around emergencies.
Just uh for. When in order, can I make a motion to table this?
That's a discretion of the the chair, but yes.
You may, but what I what I don't want to do is, listen, if you, I want, if you guys want to see changes, let's get them in right now. Otherwise, this is going to absolutely be up for vote at the next round. And I've tried to say, let's remove the dollar amount, which seems to be the two depressing issue for both of you. Which would remain, all the other items would remain the same. Mr. McNamee has stated that there's not many contracts that this school even. Enters into and the ones that we do, the bulk of them, come before this body. So. I mean, I I'm more apt to say, remove the dollar. This way, it can't be just a a nominal amount. It needs to meet the other qualifications. It still keeps consistent with the contract meets one or more of the following criteria. And now a nominal amount is no, or or a dollar amount is no longer. Part of that criteria.
So under emergency proc- procurement, to the point of the uh co- community member. We put in language that says imminent risk to life.
No, that's that that's that's a different issue. This is a contract signing policy. They're going to move forward as they see fit if there's a health. Um emergency uh risks to life emergency, that's not necessarily a contract. That's more of an immediate procurement to a. To close a loophole or to close a hole in a sinking ship. This is more of a contract of a long term issue. For example, if we remove the ten thousand dollars, we still have the I E P. Student services placement, which regardless of how we vote, they're protected by federal law. So I'm comfortable with both Dr. Mitchell and our special education coordinator moving forward with. A placement of an I E P on a child regard regardless of cost to this district because we're responsible at the end of the day. As a district. And if we if we deem not, Sean, would that open us up to litigious action if we voted against a. As a placement of a child?
School committee has no role in the determination of a placement of a student.
So even less. So if we took the not, the the monetary piece out of it for you guys, is that, does that make it okay?
I would want to see it it be limited to the superintendent.
Just the superintendent.
Yeah, and I'm not even happy with that, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't think we, I don't like the idea of just contracts being signed without. You got to keep us in the loop somehow as far as being able for all five of us to actually have a conversation on.
Yeah, but Michael, like an I E P, we don't, we can't.
I'm not talking about I E P. I don't want to, I don't know, Ben, what I'm saying is that I don't need to know the particulars about an I E P. Just it's the the courtesy of acknowledging us to say, hey, listen, we have this case where we're going to have to spend X amount of dollars.
Like John did tonight. Like John, you said tonight that we have a higher cost, correct?
Of the student service.
Correct, for student service.
Okay, so that's, so if that basically is telling me that are things being signed already?
Michael, we have no, we we don't, we can't stop a a student, we we're federally responsible for.
I I know, I understand. I've been through all that. I I understand that, but this is s- some of the requirements I think are for I E Ps. So that's. So what we're saying is that. What's the, I guess what I'm saying is, what's the difference then if you're going and already signing things for I E Ps? Why are we putting up policy for this to sign for an I E P?
I think it was to include the the dollar amount, but some of these things are inclusive of whether we vote on it or not.
I I just don't like, again, I think that, and I have to beat this, but. Superintendent works directly regardless of who the superintendent is, works for the school committee, regardless of who the school committee is.
My concern is that I I I don't want this committee to get in the way of. You know, services and supports directly related to kids and kids on I E Ps. And also if there were something to come up before a meeting that needs immediate attention. That we would have to wait until we need.
Or have an emergency meeting.
So i- it sounds to me that there, at very least. There is desire by some of the committee committee members to not have a dollar amount. That it just strictly fall under one of the other pieces. There is concerns about the emergency procurement language that either A, it be removed completely or two, be tightened up and limited. You know, something similar to what's been proposed by the member in the public. Um and. There is at least one member who is like at, at the very least against delegation to other administrators. Um but. You know, may also be against delegation up to the superintendent, which would essentially mean against the policy as a whole. So what I think I'm hearing is we need to bring this back to the policy subcommittee. Some significant concerns unless a majority of the committee is ready to approve this tonight. Um with the concerns raised by some of the other members, I think a motion to table probably at this point is in order. And will it will be taken up in January by the policy subcommittee.
All right, Mark, would you like to make your motion?
At your discretion.
No, yeah, please.
I would make a motion to table this policy to be further investigated by the policy subcommittee and brought back to committee in January. And that gives us an opportunity, anyone who has any questions, I would say to submit in writing to the policy subcommittee. Uh concerns and uh concrete uh solutions. Uh so that when it comes in, comes back in January, the discussion is is uh. Much quicker and that we can take it to vote.
Do I have a second? Go ahead, you come. Seconded and commented.
Oh, seconded, okay. I would just say that our discussions tonight should be brought back to the policy subcommittee. Yeah, I mean, we shouldn't have to sit down and rewrite what we just spoke of tonight. I mean, all of the, our discussions should be brought back to the policy subcommittee.
Changes beyond what you discussed tonight, I E. Uh who gets the approval and the non, the the dollar amount. Beyond that needs to be in writing because we did not touch on those. So there is nothing regarding all the other bullet points. Grant funding, employee contracts, except collective bargaining agreements, uh emergency procurement that must be made prior to the next regular school committee meeting. I E P for student services. So if you've got concerns about those other bullet points, please put them.
I also don't know that I'm sure that it's fair to say, just saying that you don't agree with part of the policy is enough. I I think it's fair to propose alternative language.
And that will be part of my my motion and we can enter that into the.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Well, I just have a clarifying question. If you were to take out the dollar amount, would that allow an employee contract? To be signed for an amount over ten thousand dollars?
So to be clear, the employee separation agreements or employee dispute settlements. Uh those are typically grievances and they don't, they, there's probably not a dollar amount associated with those. Now with the employee contracts. With the exception of collective bargaining agreements, because those do go in front of the school committee, uh the employee contracts are. Templates that you have already approved. The dollar amount is uh uh. Something that is typically negotiated with the oncoming administrator, subject to school committee policy. So that's never like written in stone uh uh and part of. The education reform from two thousand and nineteen, that the laws that we currently live under. The administrators other than the superintendent are hired by the superintendent. So to then have that come back in front of the committee for approval. This doesn't make any sense because if the superintendent extends an offer with a salary dollar attached to it, so long as it complies with school committee policy. Then to have it come in front of you and then voted down, it it could violate the law, similar to the the I E P scenario. Don't have, so so to answer your question, yes, but you have other policies that deal with that issue.
All right, there is a motion and a second. We will vote. All in favor to table this until the January meeting? I want to, this quote, and you said, but everything.
I can repeat it even if I wanted.
Yeah.
I I I think we know the areas that we'll we'll work on, to the extent that. No member proposes something in particular, then this subcommittee will work on language to try to accomplish what the the subcommittee thinks. Will get approval and we'll go from there.
Excellent. All in favor? Aye, excellent. We will revisit this. That's five zero eight. We'll revisit this in January. Thank you all for your input. That was a robust discussion. Uh item eight two, this is our first read, so there is no vote tonight, but we will consider to discuss the. Uh personal electronic device use policy, which is going to go into effect statewide uh next August. We would like to construct our own policy rather than be governed by uh just what the state's uh. You know, oversight is. Uh we've empowered Principal McKinnon, Dr. Mitchell. Uh others within the building that can give them feedback as to how this policy should look. It's been reviewed by Sean. Sean has also, within his firm, reached out to other school districts and had discussions amongst uh his peers. Uh regarding what their policies look like throughout the state of Rhode Island. So let's uh give this a look if we can. I would love if we could pull it up on the screen.
So let's stop on the screen.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. The idea bef- behind putting this before August was to. First off, uh be a leader in this. Uh I know that I can speak for myself, I won't speak for the other committee members, but. Uh screen time, both in school, out of school, during school, everywhere and and around uh community. Is certainly a concern that parents will bring to light if you ask them their feelings on it. Um we do know that the state of Rhode Island is going to implement a policy regardless, or Department of Education, regardless of how this body. Uh moves forward uh as of August uh twenty twenty six and we would like to cater it to. What the needs of Little Compton are um based on the feedback we've received. Um, based on the feedback we've received from those that are in the arena, most notably Principal McKinnon. Um, and others. So if Sean, you want to share anything that's in here or?
Uh, so I think that just the highlights, I'll give you just the highlights. Uh, this is a. It's commonly referred to as electronic um. Policy. Uh, sometimes it's called the cell phone policy, which is a little bit of a misnomer. It deals with more than just strictly cell phones. That's what we. You know, we automatically think and and it certainly incorporates cell phones, but also. Smartwatches and other electronic devices that. Particularly can connect to connect to the internet or wifi, um, which causes distractions to students uh throughout the day. So uh, the state law uh um. Is mandating that school departments adopt policies relative to this within. Certain contours. Uh, the. Bare minimum is that during instruction time, uh, the electronic devices are to be away. And then school departments do have some level of discretion about what that looks like outside of instructional minutes. So cafeteria for lunch, hallway passing, things of that sort. In addition, there are exceptions to the policy. For instance, if. Someone who has an I E P or a medical need to have electronic device that does connect to the internet. Um, they're allowed to have it so long as whatever document that governs that. Actually acknowledges it and and the student is required to have. Uh, so those are some exceptions. That are built in uh to that. I think the biggest question for most communities and I think parents concerned is. Is the the trade off of. Some communities wanting no cell phones or any electronic devices at all during the day. And that being an administrative issue. Uh, because it's it's hard to police. Um. Uh, can, on the other hand, you have, okay, are we going to be taking? Devices away or limiting use of device during instructional time? What does that? What does that look like? Is it keeping? Cell phones in backpacks, keeping cell phones in lockers. Uh, some school departments have gone ahead and have these like shelving systems. Walk into the room and you drop your cell phone off and you go about. Your time in that particular room. Um, others have explored the pouches, put them in and lock it up and. That sort of thing. That's obviously an expense that the school department have to incur if they're going to go in that that direction. Those are all sorts of discussions that are happening throughout the state. Um, relative to this particular policy. Um, obviously, parents, I hear a lot about safety concerns. If my child, since I want them to have the ability to communicate to me, that's. One of the positives of of these technologies. But we have to weigh that also against the. Is it becoming such a detriment to the educational experience that it's really interfering? And those are the decisions that need to be made. I think. Uh, um, the building principal could could share some like as he did uh very helpfully at the. Policy committee last week about what's kind of happening right now. Um, and administratively, what's what's possible.
Well, turn it off. Yeah, Principal McKinnon, could you please?
Yeah, uh. No, I think Sean said was spot on. It's. Really not an issue here. Um. You know, maybe eighth graders, some spattering of seventh graders, sixth graders. Uh, but it's really not an issue. The students here. Have been very good uh with it. I think I brought up uh at the last meeting. The fact that, you know. They're always trying to be one ahead of us, you know, when it comes to the AirPods, you know, and putting that, they put their phone in the locker, but they have their AirPods in. Uh, you know, looking at the enforcement. It's currently what we're doing right now. First time it's taken, they get it back at the end of the day. And there's parent involvement, and then there's detention, you know, so on and so forth. So. You know, knock on wood, i- it's not an issue. And I I do think Travis, as you talked about. You know, screen time, whether it's on a computer or on a cell phone. Uh, the parents in this town are very aware of. The effects that it has, you know, and it and it's out there. Uh, and I I do think parents are hesitating, particularly at the younger levels before they they. Buy a uh a cell phone for the students, which is which is good. Um, but I do think that it is, I I think it's well written. Um. I. You know, I don't see any issues with it as it relates to how we operate here at Wilbur. At McMahon School.
And and Principal McKinnon, if you could just elaborate, our current uh. Currently, you ask the students to stow them away in the locker?
We tell them, we don't even want to see the the square in their pockets. Um, because we know if the square is in their pockets, there's always that temptation. Um. You know, they have. They have ways of beating the system, even though it's a it's in their pocket. Um. You know, they go to the bathroom and use it, whatever it is. We have not seen it. And I want to say we may have had one or two issues early in the year. Um, particularly with the AirBuds. But it it has not been an issue since that time. You know, I I think it's also important too is is getting students to understand. Uh, how to use technology, using it in the right way. You know, we have our community project. That Mr. Torres is is running. And soon the kids will be. Involved in the project. And one of the things that they're going to be doing, you know, as part of their portfolio is taking pictures, you know, so they. They do have, they will be taking them out at points in time and and taking a picture of their. Uh, of what they're doing. Um. And then using it as part of their, you know, their final portfolio for this community project. So it's 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 also getting them to un- understand how to use it correctly. But I think for the most part, you know, at dances. We do have, you know, uh, areas of the. Gym that kids can take pictures. But then we tell, all right, let's put them away. You know, you hit a hit a dance and and karaoke and that's it. Um, and they're they're responsive to that.
Yeah, I think to your point, it's important that we teach our children. To use it as a tool and not just a toy.
Not a toy.
And um, you know, as you noted, it's not just a phone. It's a it's a camera. It's. A smart, it's an internet, it's all these other things. It's an encyclopedia, uh, it's a calculator, it's a long, you know. It's a T I eighty five and everything that we had to go and purchase on our own, uh, at at their fingerprints or at their at their fingertips. So. Um. I'm glad that you had the oversight uh in in implementing this as well and and and. Giving it the that your your writ of approval because you are the ones yourself and.
Enforcing it.
Yeah, teachers, correct. Does anyone have, I mean, like the, like I said, this is a first read. Is there anything uh people want to see in this? Are there any questions for Principal McKinnon and Sean? Regarding the way the the policy currently sits, as Sean did state. Um, and as, you know, many of us are aware, uh, there are uh uh circumstances that are exceptions to this. Um, I can think of, and I mean, I I don't know if it's within the school, but I I know uh. The technology for for diabetics now is just unbelievable with them having a a node on their shoulder. It has a it feeds information to their phone, it gives them an alert, uh, and they can go about their day. As normal with, you know, uh, whether they're playing sports. Or just, uh, you know, going about. It it gives them the feedback that's necessary. And then certainly students that. Uh, I can't think of an example of if you, would you be able to provide us an example of maybe a student with an I E P that would would need or. Someone with a a educational need?
Oh, I I I think you are correct in saying, you know, from a medical standpoint, there are certain circumstances where. Uh, there is, you know, a cell phone that might be in use to uh. You know, to just track heart rate, you know, whatever it may be. Diabetes, as you said, uh, terms of using it for an I E, no, uh. You know, one thing I could see, you know, from a multi-language learner. Uh, part, you know, where a student. Who. Had no, you know, English was their second language, you could see how a cell phone could be used, you know, with Google Translate. Uh, which is a pretty neat. Neat thing to use. Um, but as I have found out in the past, sometimes Google Translate isn't always spot on.
Fair point.
But it is, but it is a nice, a nice tool on the, yes.
Um, well, the policy says that the. They need to be stored out of view. So currently that would be in their locker.
In their lockers.
And that.
It's not.
So they can check in on them.
You know what? The teachers are out in the corridors when the kids are passing. No, they really shouldn't even be checking in on. If a student really had to use a phone. To contact a parent, and it happens. You know what? They can come down to the main office. I'll tell them, go get your phone, you can call from my office, you know, but. For the most part, you know, if they do need to contact a parent, uh, they can use the main office phone. Um, or Dalian, you know, if they they had to use their phone to get the number, they can bring that down there, but. You know. There's been cer- si- situations where parents have showed up to school to pick up their son and daughter who's sick and. Nurse never made the phone call. Um, so that that does happen.
Sure. I think you spoke to a minimal. Out during uh. I believe it was educational in time. So where does that minimal that you're referencing come in from, please?
The state law and ride regulation. As they define the school day, the school day as defined by ride in its regulations. Is a certain quantity of an instructional minutes. Uh, so that doesn't include half time for lunch, um, passing time, things of that. There's actual instructional minutes where kids are. The theory goes actually being instructed. Uh, uh, and they, students need to have that over the course of the year to meet your your full year. Um, so while the law. Reads in a way where it says. Their uh cell phones, electronics will be prohibited during the school day. It then goes on to say as defined by. Ride regulations. So. Uh, you know, a layperson. Not well versed in the regulations will hear school day and I I immediately thought, okay, from I walk in.
Yeah.
Go on, not checking me. The floor is. Is the instructional minutes. However, the policy allows for. This to be, I think, what's more in line with what's happening here at Wilbur, which is it's really throughout the day, you're not, you're not using.
What what we do tell the students, particularly older students. The school day for them is the moment they step on the bus, the moment they step off the bus at the end of the day. Because there's been. You know, although we say it's, we don't want them in school, there's times where they have them on the bus and it's equally as disruptive. Um, so. From our standpoint, we go from stepping on the bus to stepping off the bus at the end of the school day.
Um. So I my, I guess my comment, I guess I got a few comments on this, but my comment about the school bus is that. Some of these kids are on a bus for forty five minutes, fifty minutes getting home. That's a long bus ride home for these kids. So. If they were on the bus for ten, ten or twenty minutes, I can say, you know. They can wait. But if it's a forty five to fifty minutes on a bus, and especially if you have. In particular, some kids that, as you know. There's not, they may not have any friends on a particular bus that may. And they're there by themselves. So it's like, it's almost like saying you want them in, and I don't mean you, and please don't. Sorry, don't interpret that like. I don't want to see that the kid has to be there in solitary on a bus and not be able to. If that's what they want to do, if they want to work on their homework, or or they want to work on an I, they have an iPad, they want to do that, we shouldn't be. Saying that they they can't do that. Uh, I am not in favor of having screen. The phones during classes. I I think that's a distraction, but at the same time. Life is hectic and life is crazy and families go in many different directions. And I'm not opposed to have letting them have it during lunchtime. So that was going to be my question to you is when is. I know lunchtime varies for different kids, different grades and what have you, but how long is that typically? Is that like a fifteen to a twenty minute period? Uh, that that lunch, uh, lunch is twenty five minutes, twenty five minutes. So. Uh, personally, I'm not against that. I'm against them. I don't want the distractions in between classes or during the class. So maybe I I accept that term.
I think too, you you have to remember, a lot of times it's. I and I understand what you're talking about, Mike. Uh, the concern is. That not all. You know, getting on a phone during lunch. Not necessarily related to, you know, playing a game on the computer, which I I disagree with, but. It's also some of the other things that students get themselves involved with, particularly with uh social media. And the effects that that has, and the same is true even on the bus. Taking, you know, a kid who's allowed to use a computer. Phone. iPad, whatever, taking a picture of a student. And then posting it on Instagram post. It gets into some pretty uh uh bad situations.
I think as a K to eight school.
Yeah.
I I would have strong feelings about kids having access to their phones even during lunchtime.
And even on the bus. To my mind.
And and I do understand. There are some students, uh, little, little guys who are on the bus for a long period of time, but. Uh. I I think for the most part, you know, on- once they get off the bus, I get it. You know what? It's it's different, but I I just think it would lead to. Problems down the road. Um, particularly with the older students.
I guess I'm kind of curious because from what you're saying is that we don't really have any issues right now with this. So what problems would we be referring to that this could potentially come up to that you're? Maybe you're possibly alluding to that. I mean, I I know you you speak to the social media aspect of it, but I'm just curious to like, what's, what other issues? Have you run into other cases that?
That well, there there are kids, you know, with kids taking pictures of other kids in the classroom and. And and I get it on the bus, but the same thing if if. If Jack McKinnon on the bus doesn't want his. Parents don't want a picture posted. And someone is on the bus taking a picture and all of a sudden that picture's on. You know, Instagram account or a Facebook account somewhere. That's, you know, that's going to be a problem. That's what I'm thinking of, Mike. Uh. I mean, text message bullying is. You know, it's. It's it's no different than having a face to face bullying. You know, it's it's stuff that is said behind the scenes. Uh, that happens with technology. Uh, it happens when they get off the bus. But it raises its ugly head in school at times. So that's, we're trying to prevent. Uh, things like that from happening.
I can attest to that. Uh. Medical piece is quite incredible, though, and our students at the school where I teach, um, have been so respectful of the cell phone policy, those who have diabetes. And it's quite incredible how the um. Program works to actually alert the nurse when the, when there is issue with the with blood sugar and it, um, or or something like that, other medical. Um, considerations and um, students who aren't allowed to have phones, don't have a, don't protest, oh, they're allowed to have their phone. They completely understand because kids are incredible like that. Um, and the and the students that are allowed to keep the phone, um, it, you you'll never find them, you know, doing anything other than keeping it. Where it's supposed to be to help them with their medical issue. Um, and and that's another thing that um was really great about about students and kids too, is that. They they get that sort of stuff. So um, I love that exception because I think it's can be a lot safer.
Yeah. I also, I want to compliment you, Principal McKinnon, because uh. It's it's a gray area, right? I mean, I think that if you go make it black and white, like. There's no phones, we lock them up. It's just a, whereas you say, hey, we'd like them. In the locker. You've got an issue, you want to make a call, come see me, get your phone, like, it's not, what do you mean? You haven't even even have it in school. This is. Going against the grain. So I I think that your willingness to be accommodating to circumstances that arise. Uh, uh, create a more uh conducive environment for.
Using it the right way.
Correct, really, really do. Um, and I'm glad to hear that you're. Certainly challenging, but you seem to have a very open mind as to both sides of. The issue and how to be really, you know, thoughtful. Um.
If getting, if I could, getting back to what Mike talked about too. I think it's also important because we do, there are there are kids who go home. To mom and dad's who are still working. So it is important. You know what? Hey. I just got off the bus, heading into the, you know, whatever, why would they have to do it? I understand the importance that. Kids have to be in in communication with parents. I do get that.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of my concerns, you know, I mean, things. Things change.
And I think that is not really part of this policy. Like, again, we're talking about the time on learning here in school, so I. I have a kid that does have a long bus ride and she does have her cell phone. And so I I would take issue with that because that does help our family function and. It's it's a necessary tool for us. So. But as far as during during the day, her time on learning here from the time that she's here, that she absolutely doesn't have access to it.
I had to go to a neighbor's house when I forgot my key. With my little brother to call. So it would have been nice to have. The cell phone to check in. Getting off the bus.
This would be starting as of. Next school year.
Oh, I mean, if we adopted the policy. It would go, you know. One, one of the reasons we're reviewing. One, one of the reasons we're reviewing this now is to get ahead of it. And once we adopt the policy, it would go into effect. It sounds to me like the practices are already taking place. Um, this would just codify that, you know, one thing I, I find with, and like I said, I can, I won't speak for all the committee members, but one thing, more than one. Whether they're per possible, uh, future students. Uh, students that go to, that live in district that go to other schools, they're really like, I will change. My mind if there is a, a cell phone or electronic device policy in place that I, you know. Can, you know, uh, agree with. So I think that us getting ahead of what's coming. Uh, shows our, our proactiveness. I mean, this isn't the first time that Little Compton's been a leader. I think back even to the pandemic when. Uh, this little rural community was the poster child for distance learning. Um, because of the efforts of, of, of many of the people that are in this district. So. This is just another one of those things where if we can be a leader, um, and then make. Amendments as necessary, should things arise, rather than be reactive when the policy official, goes official in, in. In August and have it under verbiage that maybe we do or don't agree with, or doesn't accommodate what we're already practicing in-house. Um, so that was, that was really the goal of this, is to get this into place. Prior to, I mean, ideally before the end of this school year. So it's something that students are, you know, it's old hat when they come back. In, in twenty six, uh, September.
Completely on board with that, but I mean, I understand that we have no choice but to come in the summer, right? Goes to effect in, in August.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly don't want to be undoing, I'd ra, I'd rather the, the state come to us and say, hey, can we take a look at your policy? Because it's, it's so thoughtful, rather than, hey, we don't have a policy. Something didn't go right in this first half of the year. So here's what the new policy looks like and you have to adopt it. I'd rather them come to us and say. Amendments need to be made based on this and we can have a back and forth, rather than we don't have something in place and then we're at the mercy of the Department of Education. So that's, that's the whole idea is to get ahead of this, this eight ball.
Have they put out their policy yet?
Uh, so, right, the round Department of Ed, I do not believe have put out, um, its own policy. They may have some guidance on it. Uh, my firm created this just out of looking at what the law requires, which is pretty prescriptive. Uh, so done that and we are shopping it to districts in order to get their, their feedback. Similar to what you all are doing and hearing from administrators who will say, no, this is, this is feasible, this isn't feasible. Those sorts of things. And obviously every district will tweak a little bit here or there based on their, their own needs. Um, there is no legal requirement to have something in place until. Uh, uh, the end of August, so you're ready for the beginning of the, the school year. But I know of districts that I've worked with that have already adopted a policy.
I guess I, I kind of look at it too and say to myself, it's, it's, it's being handled in-house and there's no issue and. And I say no issue, and I say that lightly because I don't know how much pushback you've been getting from parents and that's not, that's. But I mean, if everything is being handled in-house, then that's great. I, then I also look at the opposite side and I say to myself, we put out a, a. Student handbook in the beginning of the year that basically tells how, how everything's going to work for the whole year. And I relate this to people that move the, the, uh, the goalpost a, as the game's being played. Meaning that you're changing rules as things go on. And that's why I s, I look at this and say, well, you should start this fresh when it comes, and this should be part of your handbook. Coming out in the new school year, um, not be, not be throwing out, changing the rules halfway during the school year. I, I'm not in favor of that, I mean.
And, and that doesn't necessarily stop you from adopting a policy. And saying that it will go into effect at the beginning of the next school year, so it's the way the law reads. This is not effective until August of twenty twenty six.
We could do it, it affects July one.
Right, right. I agree.
Hundred percent. My, my goal is that we are not, we are the leader in this and we're not taking orders from the state.
And, and I.
You know, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So whenever it goes into effect is, is really.
And I, I, what I think is the most important piece of getting out in front of it is. You want to have feedback from the families, particularly if the policy is going to change current operating procedures. So you're not in July and August having this room filled with concerned parents. And all of a sudden you're making changes last minute to try to accommodate things. So I think having the time now. And making sure that, uh, you know, even if you wanted to have, uh, the administration check in with. Whether it's parent organizations, just to get some feedback, uh, cause it's going to become more formalized in policy now. Uh, before you finally adopt it.
Um, I do have a question or concern just, um, under item three, um, B. Where it says here, note, can student email accounts receive external emails? So that would need to be that part of this. We need to be addressed because students cannot receive external emails. So that would, that language would need to change. But. I'm, I'm really happy. I think it's a, I think it's a strong policy and.
I'm sorry, can you put, when you say they cannot accept external emails?
So it has to be an LCD, uh, LCD SD email in order for them to receive it.
They can't have like a Gmail account.
Right, like. Your child from your personal Gmail account and, and they would receive it on their school account.
I would, as I would propose that maybe we should go with, get the feedback, and I know this is not standard procedure, that we don't typically. Get feedback from families on, on policies, but. What arm would it be to do that? To say, look, this is what policy subcommittee has come up with, with council. That we're proposing that we have to put something to place, that we're looking to put into place. I say that it'd be July one again, because I don't want to move the, the pole, the field goal post here, but. We'll get our feedback and then bring it back to us and then make it effective July one. So it's in the handbook at that point. So you start fresh. So that there's no confusion. Now, if this is, if this is written and you're already following this, then there shouldn't really be an issue with this. I guess I speak because I have an older student and we use it a little bit different. We, we, uh. We trust her more with it, you know, to, look, this is what you need to do after school or what have you. And then, you know, mom and dad may only have breaks. At lunchtime to be able to send that message out because they're at work and the kids need to be able to get the message. So. As in, if I use Travis's example, he, he had to go to somebody else's house for something. If we wanted that kid to go somewhere else after school or. Go to a neighbor's house and, and we're prohibiting kids from even having a phone at school and on the bus. Then they never get that message until it's too late.
But, but they can, they can call the school. That's what I would say to their parents, call the school, we'll get the message to them.
In a town where service is this spotty, I would advise parents to do that anyways, because there's. No telling that your child's going to get that message.
We, we said, we say that, but we don't know everybody's particular network, what they're allowed to do and not allowed to do.
Well, if you can, if you can text your child, you can reach out to the school now.
So now you're not supposed to be on your phones. Even apparently, school companies, school companies have policies where they don't want people on them. You've got to think about all the different avenues.
So this first read is an opportunity for the community to be here to give their.
Yeah, we want.
Their, their voice heard, you know, don't have anybody here to comment publicly. We'll put it on. Again, it sounds like for another read, that will be the opportunity for folks to come and.
I think we should take it a step further though. I think we should actually send this to the parents. I said, I know it's not standard operating procedure, but. Send it to them and let them know, because not everybody sits and watches this, this show, uh, this meeting on TV. They're not all watching this. I mean, if we don't let them know that.
I think we can, we, we don't have to necessarily send the policy. We could say we're soliciting feedback on a, a cell phone policy that is going to be going into effect. Regardless of how the school committee moves forward, um, and we want your feedback as to what that policy looks like for you, your student and your family. And then they can come to the meeting and, and, and speak open, open endedly, because I'm sure we'll get a, a litany of responses. Um, from, you know, don't let them allow, don't allow them in the school to, I want my kid to be able to have it on their person. To, um, you know, and, and everything in between. So it, it's important. Much like. Parents want to be a part of this, we, we can absolutely let them know that we're discussing the policy and then they can come and get feedback. That's, I mean. Everybody gets parents where we, we can share that we're discussing this. I mean, have you had any? Outreach regarding the cell phone policy? So I mean, it's, it's out there that it's coming. Um, but if you're not, you know, civically engaged, I get it. It's not at the top of your radar. There's a million other things going on. Uh, with your day to day life, uh, we're, we're fortunate to be in this arena to where we, we have a watchful eye on this, but. To Michael's point, it is our responsibility to ensure that if there are people that want to, you know, give feedback, we can. Uh, they can, they have the ability to do so. So maybe we do in, in a parent square, say, we're going to be discussing this at our next meeting or a policy subcommittee meeting. Um, and they can get feedback from there, but I, I, I'm, I'm very, uh, I, I would not, uh, feel comfortable. I mean, they can see the policy online right now with the meeting minutes, can they not? So yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't need, uh, yeah, the agenda goes out. We don't need, uh, twenty five hundred authors. We need people that are thoughtful, that want to come in and, and say, hey, this is my concern. I, I saw this in the policy or. Does the policy cover this? Because this is my family's need. So, um, I'd, I'd rather operate from a, from a point of, of that. Because most of our policies, uh, our parents are, you know. Their level of, uh, engagement is only when there are concerns that come up. So certainly saying. We're implementing a, a person, excuse me, a personal electronic device use policy, which includes cell phones, smartwatches. Airbud, uh, earbuds, uh, Bluetooth devices, uh, I think we'll get them engaged. Awesome. Great first discussion. Let's move on to, uh, item eight three. Consider discussing vote to approve the deaccessioning, accessioning? Look at that. The other cafeteria tables. So we have these cafeteria tables. Uh, I was told that. Counselor McHugh sat at those very tables when he was in this building. So maybe others of you that are in his, uh, age demographic there, but we have received. New, uh, tables, is that what I'm being told? And we just can't find a bidder for these or can't give them away?
We have a grant actually that, uh, we got the new tables through, uh, to get the full amount of grant from the ride. A lot of these tables, uh. A lot of the, there's a lot of money out there for cafeteria tables for other districts, uh, at this point. You know, it may be difficult to. Sell them, certainly there may be some schools that could use them.
Our last meeting, um, in Carolyn, I don't know if you will have any feedback, but Dr. Mitchell stated, uh, or. Policy or agenda meeting, that they have reached out to the town, reached out to the community center. Reached out to the wellness center. Um, there's just not really a need for. These tables anywhere within our community. And then, uh, we've reached out to some. Other nonprofits or other area schools and.
Nothing yet, nothing yet. Lori sent out yet another message with pictures and, you know, free up for grabs. Um, and to my knowledge, she hasn't heard anything back yet, but we're still trying to, to give them away so that they can still use.
So I guess the question would be, the tables that are in service right now, if it's still staying in service through June? Or do we already have the new tables?
New tables, this is going back almost a month ago. Uh, they should be coming in, uh, at, at any time. I, I, I could see after the new year, having, the cafeteria is going to look more like a cafe with, uh, uh. We call them caterpillar tables, similar to what we have, but they have a little more of a curve to them. We have three round tables that hold ten students each. And we have, it escapes me, but, uh, similar to a restaurant. We would have little cubbies where six kids can sit facing each other, uh, you know, you know, up against the wall. So it'll be a nice little, uh. Addition to the cafeteria.
There are also, um, some ADA complaints.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Different sizes.
Capacity that we can accommodate now compared to this new setup that is being proposed as far as the amount of students.
Very, very similar. Um, it'd be almost sitting the same amount of students.
I, I will consider, if there's no more discussion, I will consider a vote to approve. What is, what is this? I, I mean, listen, I'm not, what is this word?
You're gonna, you're gonna vote to get rid of those old.
Why, why this new word? Why just, you know, new words? New word.
They want something.
Deaccessioning. Uh, so I will consider a vote to approve the deaccessioning of the cafeteria table. Am I saying?
Accessioning.
Accessioning?
I actually don't know if you're saying it correct or not.
You are dyslexic for life. Let me be clear. I mean, I haven't had this much trouble since I've seen Icelandic, the Icelandic alphabet, okay? So I will consider a motion to remove the cafeteria tables. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Very much.
Very much. That is a five oh vote for the removal. Uh, item eight four.
And Mark second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just get things down for the minutes.
Thank you. Item eight four, consider discussing vote to approve the transportation service agreement for a student. As we all know. We approved a bid, it went before, was it Ocean State?
This process starts like a year ago.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. I, I'm just trying to do the.
We, we have the outside consultant who prepares the, uh, request of proposal. In that request of proposal. Are items that are really itemized that are required to be in the contract. I know Sean had reviewed that. In conjunction with the contract. So there are specifics on these bus contracts, uh, that have to be in. In the contract, but when the RFP is sent out and it's evaluated by the consultant. Uh, those have to be agreed to, uh, to accept the bid. So we have to be a, a qualified bidder. Uh, but you also have to meet the, these criteria. It's not as if you can pick and choose these items. And then those items get transferred into a contract. Uh, first student, uh, took the lead and prepared the contract. Uh, sent that over to me. I reviewed it. Sean got it. He reviewed it. Um, and of course we've been operating for the last six months without a contract. Last time we were going, we did it without a contract, so. Uh, we, we need to get this one approved. Uh, and first student needs a contract because in one of them, the five buses. They got to demonstrate that they have a contract in place. And, uh, also on the bid process, you know. Ocean State was the little bidder, then they kind of backed out and, um, first student was able to. Meet that low bid, so they didn't use their original bid. They. Uh, saved us well over fifty thousand, I believe, on this, on this contract. So. Uh, so what you have in front of you is a, a reduced contract, uh, ready for, uh, ready for signature, so.
Of what we previously voted on, but now need to vote again because it's first student and not, no longer Ocean State.
No, because it's a contract.
If I'm not mistaken, we had, we had the board for a student at a previous meeting.
Yes, we did.
So you, you, this is really the third vote in this saga. The first vote awarded to, uh, the other, uh, bus company. Then you had another vote, I believe that the next meeting, if I'm not mistaken, uh, awarded to first student and now the contract.
Yeah, whenever we got the bad news, there was a second vote. All right, um, any questions, concerns, comments? We've all seen this before. Trust Mr. McNamee and certainly our attorney.
I, yeah, you have.
Yeah, I, I brought this up before, um. My concern about not being able to get extra buses for. Extra activities outside the, the regular bus route. How does that address this? When we're running for short on buses. Like, I E, we couldn't go to another school because we didn't have a bus. Now they're coming to us. How, how does that address this? And I know we've already voted to go with this company, but. What is that?
We've been using other, other bus companies to provide those buses.
I, I know you, you're filling in to other bus companies, but I mean, our primary. Area or our primary company that's going to provide our transportation is not providing us extra buses for our extra activities for our students to go on. Different events.
Well, I think it also from a cost standpoint, sometimes it's cheaper.
It is, it is cheaper.
Using other buses. As well. So we're not committed to using them.
With this contract, I mean, we're not committed to using it. We don't have to use.
But we have used them on occasions to provide.
Yeah, I, I think in a lot of cases with first student, um, it's not, they just don't have the drivers. Yeah, the bodies to, to do it. Um, and that's the case pretty much everywhere we, we go. We have used Tremblies. Out of, uh, Bedford and also Ocean State, uh, excuse me, not Ocean State, uh. Fisher, uh, is another one that we've used and, you know, for the most part, I think Ms. Darlene has. Every game accounted for. December eighteenth, we'd known for a month, we, we couldn't get a bus for it, so. We just flopped the games. So we're going to them on February second. They're coming to us on the eighteenth.
I used that as an example, but I mean, you and I had discussions before, I think prior to when there was other thing where we couldn't get buses for our. For events and what have you. So I'm like. I don't understand why our own supplier is not supplying us a bus. If they want to multi-kit, they want to. Oh, what is this? A million dollar contract, two million dollar contract over three years? And it's like, I would make sure I would get, I would take care of my client. They're spending that much money.
It's also, I mean, we, as John articulated during this, even this bid process. It's a bit of a, bit, a bit of a monopoly. They, they kind of got, there's not. Like Ocean State was thrilled until they didn't get the Tiverton contract. And then they were like, wow, Little Compton, you're actually really far away.
Well, we have to, where we park the bus. And that's not going to go well. That happens with all, all bus companies in terms of the extracurricular. Sometimes it's a matter of, I mean, too, we have, in Lincoln, we have sports events at certain times. We have to be there at. Three or three thirty and they, they don't have the buses available because they're doing the elementary school run. In that case, you know, I've got twenty four buses running, uh, just K two twelve, non-special ed. Drivers, I think, have become a little bit less of a problem. Than it has been in the past. At this point in time, but, uh.
Yes, to refresh my memory, this is a, this goes from, uh, from twenty five to twenty eight. It's a three year contract.
But it's three with two year option. Cause the other thing is that when they're buying the buses. They're doing a depreciation over five years. So it's kind of like you're matching that, uh. And we only can do three years at a time, so we do three plus two one.
All right, I will consider a motion to approve, or hopefully the third and final time. Transportation services agreement with first student. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor? That is five zero. Yep, five zero. That motion, uh, who cares? Uh, consider discuss. Congratulations first student. Consider discuss and vote to approve the Newport Renewable Maintenance Contract. Which as Sean stated at the beginning of this.
Yes, when they reached out, uh, reached out to, uh, to us and they want, put together a, uh. Put a maintenance contract. It's like thirty five hundred dollars to look at it. They're also going to do the monitoring of the, uh. The system as well as, uh, packaging up the, uh, sale of the energy. During the whole process. So at this point in time, uh, we're probably, uh, what, a year into it, so. You know, any warranty probably is at least a one year, but. The system should have some maintenance and, uh, I think it would be appropriate to have them do it.
Does anyone have any questions?
With this preventive maintenance, I mean. And the baby just, basically just babysitting us? Or we, we get stuff with this, but I'm just getting this now.
Well, any maintenance that would be required. So they're monitoring the system. So if there's some panels that. You know, so they go haywire, then, you know, it's going to be the responsible with the ability to come up and. Maintain those.
So have they been doing this since it got installed? That's under that or not?
Well, I haven't, well, first of all, we haven't seen, I haven't seen them in here. I don't think, I think the system's been operating well, but. You know, we have, uh, probably a one year kind of warranty there. Some of that stuff in terms of.
Right, the typical manufacturer one year warranty, labor and materials. But I guess what you're saying is that they would be actually monitoring the system part of this maintenance contract is what you're asking.
And they do that right now.
So it, so they are doing that. That's what I'm wondering. I mean, like, has the system been running and nobody's been monitoring? Nobody's been watching after it for. You're saying that this company's actually been monitored?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And what I'll do is I'll, at some point, get them to give me a report. When it's been running, probably maybe the end of December, saying, okay, it's been up and operational for about a year. You know, give us the specification so that we can now compare it to what they had indicated, the system would do. Well, too, so they have the capability of generating those reports.
We have to pay for visits up and beyond this contract. Is that, can I understand that? After eight hours of labor at a certain rate, is that what I'm reading? Give you eight hours in this contract? We feel good in theory. Be in business for the next couple of years. I mean, right, within reason though, it feels like.
Uh, yeah, I think, um.
They can fight the good fight.
Certainly they have an excellent reputation. They, they did a great job on the installation, so.
They're a pretty big provider, uh, to commercial and industrial spaces in the state of Rhode Island. This isn't a. I mean, these residential companies seem to be trading hands at like the drop of a hat, but nonetheless, uh, Newport Renewables is. The most trusted, I would say, at least in.
Everybody I've been dealing with has been very knowledgeable in the area, too, very helpful.
He was very responsive when we asked him to come back.
Spoke to about packaging of sale of electricity. What regards was, why would we be selling electricity?
Uh, because when I, uh, what we're generating is being sold back, is goes back to the grid. So then they package that up, they sell that. Uh, energy, uh. Because at our point, we can't use it to offset it. We've got virtual net metering credits that are going to be offsetting. What we're using at this point in time. So now we're going to have the actual. Uh, monies that we get in for the sale to help offset our electricity. Because virtual net metering is going to cover a portion of the energy that we're, uh, we're generating. From a green energy standpoint, so we're kind of matching that up.
We actually producing more electricity than we're sending back to the grid? I mean, then we, yes, we're, we're using.
We're not using any of the energy that the solar is providing. It's all being sold back.
Everything that we're making here is being sold back to the grid.
It's sold back. I don't know whether the grid can account for it, but. But that's why, that's why it's important to have them.
But after it powers this building. After it powers this building.
So. So in, in this case, so for example, in, in Lincoln, when we put up our solar and up physical education, we're using that power. Um, uh, to, to offset, we're actually physically using that power. Uh, here, we're not using the power that's being generated. It's all being sold back to the grid.
Okay.
So we're buying our energy from, I think it's Constellation still. And when we're also using our virtual net metering credits, uh, to our account to offset the cost of. Of that energy. So we're getting, um, we're getting the cost of the energy at thirty five percent discount. By offsetting the virtual net metering credits. And then we're also going to offset that. Electricity with the sale of the electricity, uh, in the market from the, from the solar.
Does, uh, do we know what it's being sold back at, at what? Uh, how much per kilowatt hour, I E, like.
Uh, yeah, they, they sectioned up in, uh. I forget what they call it now, but I can, I can get that information.
Be interested to know if it's the same as residential because. It's a benefit to residential. I mean, I'm, I'm selling my power back at the highest. Blotted amount. Some people are. Set them out.
That's the other thing with Newport Renewables, the conversation I had with them relative to. The sale of the energy in, in the market. For that. So they're evaluating that and they're consulting with us as to. Whether or not that's the best, best number. But we're not entering into any specific contracts for long term. Their recommendation is we sell it. Based on when we package them up, they get ready to go to market, we get somebody to bid on it. At a certain price. Whatever the market is.
I was going to say, that's how that price is only going up.
All right, for all intents and for good head, Michael, one last, so from a legal standpoint, where is this? How do we hold this company accountable that they're going to get the best rate for us for everything that we're sending back to the grid that they've managed to package for us?
Well, we know what the market is.
You're holding them accountable through what John just said. The, the, uh, knowing what the market is. I mean, if you have concerns about what they're purchasing. We can bring that to their, to their attention. If you don't think they're following through on their, on their contractor doing the job. It's just like anyone who's executing a contract. If they don't act in good faith, they're violating the contract.
Yeah, I would, so.
I mean, there, there's a certain level of judgment that, that takes place that would be expected in all, all cases, but. Beyond that, you have your, you have your remedies under the contract. Yeah, I just say.
Specifically about operations and maintenance of the, of the panels.
Right, that's what, that's what we'll confuse by the question, but. But in terms of operation and maintenance, if we have, again, concerns about. Quality, we don't think people are living up to their obligations. We can. We can explore if they're, if they're simply just not doing the job, just like anyone else, you're violating your contract.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I, I would, you had said, John, like. Getting reports back from them. So it says when they do, it's the annual inspection and testing. It would be nice to be able to hear like what that, what they found. But.
John, thank you. Sean, thank you. Um, I will consider a motion to approve the Newport Renewables Maintenance Contract. Do I have a second? All in favor of approving the Newport Renewables Maintenance Contract? Say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. School committee members, are there any requests for information from administration or legal counsel at this time? Keep in mind, it is a request. It's not a back and forth dialogue. Uh, any requests made will be answered. Subsequently through email and or at our next committee meeting. All right, that said, I will consider a motion to enter into executive session under our hold on. I have something. It's Carolyn. My ears are ringing. Please note that any person who has discussed an executive session has been notified in writing in advance of this meeting and has given, been given the opportunity to have such discussion in open session. Pursuant to R I G L, section forty two dash forty six dash five A one. There will be. Votes taken in open session at the conclusion of executive session. So if you want to stick around, I don't. Well, the Knicks played last night. I'm not sure if the Celtics are playing tonight. Maybe Roger wants to hang out. Other than that, I will consider a, uh, but do you want to just take a moment?
No, maybe you, I would call, call for the motion and then.
Yes.
You enter, once you have the motion to, uh, involve, you can let people exit. But that, this part needs to be in public.
Okay, beautiful. I will consider a motion to, consider a vote to enter into executive session under R I G L, section forty two dash forty six dash five A. Two and forty two dash forty six dash five A one. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Okay.
We will vote via roll call.
Susan.
Hold the ball.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Aye.
We are reconvening in open session. There was a notification that no votes were taken in executive session and I will consider a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the minutes of executive session have been sealed with a five zero. Oh. Item ten four, consider to discuss and vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Little Compton Teachers Association and the school committee. Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And then finally, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
I would like to adjourn.
Oh my God, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion also carries five zero. Thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you community tuning in. Thank you Kate for your diligence as our confidential secretary and Mr. Shaw.